School committee meeting for April 11, 2022. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. The listing of matters are those recently anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussions to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and being livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org, and a recording of this meeting will also be available on wb-cam.org. Our first agenda item is the introduction of our new school committee members. Congratulations and welcome to Mr. Kerry Milton and to Mr. David Schmier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For being part of our committee.
Glad to have you.
And now we're going to do the reorganization of the school committee members, of the officers.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Donna Hume, Chairperson of the School Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is yours.
Thank you.
Done.
Thank you. And I'd like to make the motion to nominate Mr. David Yeo as Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Robin Jack Dragonetti as Clerk of the School Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's all set. Next up, we have Subcommittee Appointments. Did everybody get a copy of the list of functions and responsibilities of the Subcommittee? Okay, so I'll start, and I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Milton to the Donations and Dedications Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. I'd also like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Yeo as the Sixth Bank Representative. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then for the Warrant and Budget Subcommittee, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Dragonetti and Mr. Schmier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then Policy Review, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mrs. Dragonetti and Mrs. Milton on that Subcommittee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we also had the Academic Continuity Subcommittee that we used to get us through the COVID situation, and I'd like to make a motion to actually dissolve that one since it's no longer applicable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mrs. Dragonetti, do you want to make the motion for the Capital Budget and Facilities Subcommittee?
Sure. I don't remember. Is that you? Okay.
And you, yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Hume and Mr. Yeo on the Capital Budget Facilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I think likewise for the Personnel Negotiations.
I'd like to make a motion for Personnel Negotiations to nominate Mrs. Hume and Mr. Yeo.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And the last one?
And I would like a motion to appoint Mrs. Hume and Mrs. Dragonetti to the Safe School Representatives.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that's all of them. Next up is another voting issue. It's the appointment of Mr. Bodwell to serve as a member on the Board of Project Contemporary Competitiveness for the 2022-2023 fiscal school year. Would you want to speak about it?
I will. PCC has been running for a number of years, and unfortunately, it was unable to run the last two years. They're really trying, working hard to try to get the numbers back up to a spot where they'll be able to financially support the program. They need 300 students to run the program without a loss. So they're continuing to get closer and closer. There's been information sessions here in West Bridgewater. They've done virtual ones. One of the lead proctors and persons in charge is one of our teachers, Jamie Martin, who does an amazing job. I've been to PCC several summers and seen what goes on. It's a wonderful, wonderful program, and one of my daughters also attended it, so I can't speak highly enough about the program. We hope we do get the support from the communities around so we can run the program again. Fingers crossed that it will run.
Can you remind me what the grade levels is for that? Open it up to the school.
Up through grade 10, so it's grade seven through 10. Current seven through 10.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Bodwell to serve as a member on the Board of Project Contemporary Competitiveness for the 2023 fiscal school year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Another voting issue pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012. Members of the Board of Directors at North River Collaborative are to be appointed annually. Mr. Bodwell, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Bodwell to serve as the West Bridgewater Public Schools Representative on the Board of Directors of the North River Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, for the 2022-2023 fiscal school year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Another voting issue pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012. Members of the Board of Directors at Reed's Collaborative are to be appointed annually. I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Bodwell to serve as the West Bridgewater Public Schools Representative on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, for the 2022-2023 fiscal school year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the introduction of our student rep tonight. I'd like to welcome Chase Ryan to our meeting. Thank you for joining us, Chase. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us. Next is the approval of two sets of meeting minutes. First are the minutes from our March 1, 2022 meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 1 meetings, uh, meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And next is the approval of a minutes from our March 7, 2022 meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 7 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Superintendent's update, Mr. Bodwell.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hume. Well, today it's not on the agenda, but I did want to report out that our sixth graders are up at Nature's Classroom. They left this morning. It's up in Groton. I think we've got a few pictures of some of the kids up there. It's a wonderful trip. They're going up Monday through Thursday. I know Mr. Lehman is up there now with the teachers and the chaperones and all the kids, and I'm sure they're having a blast. The weather is wonderful, and it looks to be wonderful for the rest of the week, much better than last week, although they would have continued on and had a great time no matter what. But it really is a wonderful trip for our kids. I know, well, people talk about it after, I think they did present earlier this year about it. It's been a couple of years not going again due to COVID. I really feel it's one of the greatest trips we offer our kids. It's a great experience for them to be away from home, and I give tons of credit to our staff who take their time, and the chaperones. They're on 24/7, so it's really a fun trip and memories that will last a lifetime. So very excited that they are up there now, and I plan to join them tomorrow morning through probably dinnertime if I can get a couple of good meals up there. It's always a bonus. Food is good, especially after hiking all day. Next, we have the budget. Not really much to report. Due to the fact that the budget was fully approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we thank them for their continued support. As you can see, the budget is broken up into a few parts in terms of the Chapter 70 funding that we receive, town contributions, and then the school contributions. So we have a budget that totals over $17 million. So it's a big budget. I want to thank the members of the School Committee, the Budget Subcommittee, Mrs. Dragonetti and Mr. Yeo for all their hard work, but it's, I think, working together as a team. We've got this budget through that meets the needs of our students and staff in the district. So very pleased they'll move forward now to the town meeting. School Choice update. We continue to move slowly and cautiously, to be honest with you, as we look to add school choice students to the district. Our applications were strong once again. We had over 140 applicants that are various grade levels. We are moving slowly, especially in the elementary grades where the class sizes are tight. We do not, nor have we ever wanted to add school choice students. That would jeopardize a small class size at any grade level. At the middle, senior high school, grades seven to 12, we seem to have more openings. In seventh grade, we go from four sections to five sections, and in a high school, we lose students to southeastern primarily and a few to private schools or the agricultural schools. So there are more openings. But we know that the numbers are going to be smaller over the next few years as we experience more building in town. So it's, we've always looked very closely, and even more so now with the different building projects that are going on. So I know it's disappointing because I can hear every single day that Mrs. LaCroy is getting phone calls asking if decisions have been made. We have made decisions at the elementary level yet, but some at the secondary in grades seven and nine, we have accepted a few students. Then the Capital Improvement Plan in your packets, you will see the draft of a Capital Improvement Plan. Over the years, we've submitted a capital budget, which has provided information to the Capital Budget Committee that's run through the town. We want, I want to expand this to look at our future needs. Always on the form that was part of the capital budget, there would be years going out, five years, but there was little room for explanation and information. So I felt that it was important to add more information as to what our needs are, not just building and grounds, but also for technology needs over the next five years. We know they will change, they'll be modified, but I think it's important to look at that and see what are our greatest needs. And I've relied on Julie Hamlin, our Director of Building and Grounds, as well as the Principals to gather information. I think it's good as a committee that we can look at this and say, what are our future needs? And that kind of plays into a little bit later the MSBA Statement of Interest when we look at our buildings. Our buildings are incredibly valuable pieces of property in town, probably the most valuable that we have in this town. So we want to make sure we're taking good care of them, and I will tell you that our staff does an amazing job with them. But when they get older, there tends to be more needs, and we want to be proactive in addressing those needs. And Ms. Giannis is going to talk about the Student Opportunity Act Amendment.
This year, we had a chance to amend our Student Opportunity Act that we submitted to the state last year, and Massachusetts is calling for a commitment to ensure that every student in the state experiences high-quality learning opportunities that lead to success in school and post-secondary success. So there are four student opportunity commitments that we have to look at when we write this act, and the first one is intentionally focusing on student subgroups. The second is adopting and deepening or continuing evidence-based programs to close opportunity gaps and achievement gaps and allocate resources to support those evidence-based practices. The third, monitor success in reducing disparities in achievement over the three years, and we use a small number of metrics and targets. And the last one is engage families, especially those of the student subgroups in need of support. How can we best meet those students' needs? So how are we going to do this? Research-based early literacy programs in pre-kindergarten and early elementary grades, supporting educators to implement high-quality-aligned curriculum, language support programs, and summer learning to support skill development. The research-based early literacy programs in pre-kindergarten and early elementary grades. So the district was just awarded an accelerated literacy grant, which is going to allow us to purchase a high-quality evidence-based program, foundation and core. The grant was offered by the state in December. It was such a quick turnaround. So it was offered in December. It had to be submitted to DESI in January. We were notified in February, the end of February, that we were awarded the grant, about $150,000, to purchase this material. And everything has to be purchased and delivered by June 30 of this year. So it didn't follow the normal curriculum adoption, but we had already started that process prior to COVID, and we had to put it on hold when COVID struck. So we just picked it up. We had a early literacy committee, and we worked for about three weeks, and our decision was made, and it was sent out to the teachers today. So we're going to, one of the main things we're looking at is purchasing foundations, which is a systematic program in foundational skills. We're going to, it has mnemonic awareness, phonics, high-frequency word study, reading fluency, vocabulary, comprehension strategies, handwriting, and spelling. The next one is supporting educators to implement the high-quality-aligned curriculum. So pre-k to grade three teachers have started training in the science of reading during this school year. They've spent their professional development and after-school working on the science of reading instruction. All elementary teachers are trained, will be trained and supported in implementing the newly adopted curriculum materials beginning this school year and continuing into next school year during their PD days. Language support programs. The district has implemented a high-quality ESL curriculum program at the elementary level, and the middle, senior high school will soon be purchasing a new high-quality ESL curriculum program as well. Professional development on the implementation of the programs is and will be provided to the ESL teachers. We've hired a new ESL teacher, which gives us two and a half English language learner teachers, up from one and a half, and we also have an ESL coordinator this year. The district is implementing many more family engagement programs for families and students whose first language is not English, and we will continue our state seal of illiteracy. Our first English language learner family night will be April 29 this year, and I cannot wait for that. And summer learning to support skill development. A summer Wildcat Academy will be offered to our English language learner students this year. This program will help close achievement gaps by giving the student population more time to practice and acquire English language skills. Many of you remember last year, we got a, we received a grant to host a Wildcat Academy. The grant was unavailable this year, so we've had to scale it down, and we're going to target our English learners this year. And then some of the metrics we use to measure, we used and will use to measure achievement, we're going to look at the increase in percentage of EL students scoring meeting or exceeding as determined by MCAS, English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science, Technology, and Engineering, increase in percentage of EL students attaining English proficiency benchmarks, and increase in percentage of EL students scoring meeting or exceeding as determined by benchmark assessments such as star reading and star math. And any questions?
Who does the teaching, someone?
It's going to be the ESL teachers.
So it is the ESL teachers?
Yes, this year it will be, and I'm probably going to have a couple regular ed teachers as well in with them.
Thanks, Ms. Hannah. And then finally, the MSBA Statement of Interest. When I started the process, I really wasn't sure I needed to be doing two statements of interest, but when we looked at our project being a consolidation project or potential consolidation project, we had to do a statement of interest for both Spring Street School and the Rose Hill McDonald School. The window for the MSBA submissions opened in late January and closes in late April. It's a lot that goes into it in terms of looking at the building, the educational needs, and the facility needs as well. So I've had a lot of collaboration with the head of Building and Grounds, Mrs. Goulet, Mrs. Giannis, our technology director, Mr. Collins, our SRO Officer Pope, has been involved as well to try to gather as much relevant information as possible to submit the statement of interest. The statement of interest has to be approved by both the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen prior to submission on April 29. So that's why we'll, I've already asked and placed on the agenda for the April 20, I believe, Board of Selectmen meeting, and then we'll look to schedule another meeting later in April prior to the submission date. It's our goal to get approved first go-around, but I know in many cases, I know for the middle, senior high schools, after the third submission. We won't find out until December, sometime in December, if we're approved or not, and then we'll follow their procedures after. If not approved, then we'll go back to the drawing board. We will add more information to our statements of interest and proceed accordingly. So I think there are needs, there, you know, our buildings are aging. Again, they do a great job with the upkeep, but we want to provide the best education for our students in a state-of-the-art learning facility that meets their needs. And I think right now, we can do more, and I think if we had a newer building with all the amenities such as this building, I think that better serves our kids. So we'll do what we need to do to get to that point.
Mr. Bodwell, I've been working many hours on that statement of interest, so we appreciate it. Um, next up, our student representative update. Chase?
At the Spring Street School, this term, March was a busy month. At the Spring Street School, Ms. Sullivan, elementary STEM teacher, ended Dr. Seuss Week with the kindergartners making Ublak. Everyone enjoyed the gooey mess. Thank you to the PTO and parent volunteers that helped make our book fair a success. It was great to see our students excited with their new purchases. We held registration for our preschool program from March 14 through March 25. Due to overwhelming response, we are reviewing the possibility of adding additional spots. Families on the waitlist will be notified by the ending of May. Thank you for your patience. Kindergarten registration is currently open, and families can register online by visiting the school webpage. Anyone with questions can contact Mrs. Ellis in the Spring Street School office. At the Rose Hill McDonald, we'd like to thank our student council members who spent a portion of their March meeting time cleaning up the school grounds. They're amazed at how much trash they collected. A huge shout-out to our third graders who completed the ELA MCAS last week. They arrived at school eager and confident to show you what they know. We are confident the test scores will show your hard work. Last Friday, students in Ms. Page, Ms. Messina, and Ms. Tandre's class invited their families in for a author celebration. The students were proud to show off their writing, "The Best Part of Me." At the Howard, the grade four through six students traveled to the middle school, middle senior high school to view the first act of Into the Woods. The students were engaged and came away with a positive theater experience. After the show, the cast from Into the Woods held a question-and-answer session with the students. Students were very inquisitive about the show, and the collaboration amongst the Howard students and middle, senior high school was a great demonstration of community. Sixth graders would journey on their field trip to Nature's Classroom this week as a residential field trip program that emphasizes experiential education. Nature's Classroom takes a holistic approach to learning and foster not only the educational growth of students, but also social and personal growth. After living and learning together during their time at Nature's Classroom, students develop a sense of community, a confidence in themselves, and an appreciation for others that is carried with them to the school committee, community. Grades four through six will be completing their ELA MCAS testing at the end of this week. At the middle, senior high school, the Drama Club put on an amazing performance of Into the Woods for the WB community. In addition, students from the Howard School were given the opportunity to come and watch the play on the half-day. We hope we were able to encourage soon-to-be middle, senior high school Wildcats to get involved in the drama program. This past weekend, the junior prom was held at the Mockingbird. Students looked outstanding and had a great time dancing and singing on the dance floor. We just wrapped up Pride Week with some great competitions in the gym between high school power blocks. The middle, the middle school students hired guest speakers from the community for Career Day to get a glimpse into some professions. It was a great experience for them, and we thank our volunteers.
Next up, under business. First, our next school committee meeting is on the same day as town meeting, so typically we will have our school committee meeting earlier. So we did confirm that the town meeting is at 6:00.
Correct.
So does anyone have an issue if we meet on that May 9 date at 5:00, and then just go to the town meeting from there?
No, fine with me.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get that. And then superintendent evaluation dates. So typically, just for the, for the new members, Mr. Bodwell's interview date is approaching, and to bring you up to speed, the MASC, excuse me, the MASC has a template that we usually fill out as part of his evaluation process, and typically, we present it at our June meeting. So we typically will have a deadline two weeks prior to that for us to all get our evaluations done and submit them to the Chair and Mrs. Ellis. So if we use that same formula for the dates, that would ask that we have our evaluations completed by Monday, May 23, and then Mrs. Ellis can get us a copy of the blank evaluation format that we use to fill out. Does that sound like that timeframe would work?
So there's one about, are there, everybody?
We each do one individually, and then typically, we'll work to kind of combine them into one that we present at the June meeting.
Okay.
You know, collaborate and kind of put them all together to make one to present.
Ms. Hume, would you like me to do what I did last year in terms of a Google folder that I drop things into and give you a write-up on each of the goals and throughout all the standards and so forth?
Yes.
Okay, I'll give you that.
Yep, that would be great. All right, and then next, under business, an additional school meeting. Mr. Bodwell, we're fence that he, once he completes the statement of interest and presents it to the Board of Selectmen, we'll need to, need to approve it as well, and with the deadline of that being April 29, we will have to have an additional meeting to approve that since we, our next regularly scheduled one is after that date. So looking at the week of April 25, I know I can't do that Monday, the 25th, but I didn't know what everyone else's availability was for the other days of that week, on Tuesday, the 26th, perhaps?
I can't do the 26th.
Can't do the 26th. Did you say, could you do the 26th?
I think I can.
You can, I think you can, okay.
And it's, it's very brief.
Very brief.
Very brief.
Yeah, we'll just have the one item to just prove the statement of interest.
Wednesday works for me. Wednesday or Thursday I can do.
Yeah, both Thursdays.
I know Thursday's Mr. WB, so.
Oh, actually, nope, Thursday, we're busy.
Yeah. Can't miss that show.
I know.
Do we want to say we'll, we'll put it down for Wednesday, the 27th?
That's fine.
Is that a review? Okay.
Point. Yes.
And then the last item under business is the amendment to the Middle, Senior, High School Handbook. Ms. Page?
Sure. Thank you for hearing us. So students for, I would say, over the last few years have increasingly asked, can we look at the policy on hats? And I always say to them, go to your student council, talk to your, your peers, put a proposal together. And so this year, they did. So Chase Ryan, along with Jacob Souza, went, they formed a proposal, they talked with their classmates, they went to their student council with the proposal, and you can explain that part if you'd like.
Yeah, we decided that it's kind of time for that rule to change in the Middle, Senior High School Handbook because it's just a bit outdated. The idea is that probably that it's in the handbook is because it's seen as disrespectful to teachers and to administrators, but it's just dated. It's not really, kids aren't going to be wearing hats to disrespect their teachers. They're going to be wearing hats because that's how they feel comfortable in their school. It's no different than wearing a shirt. It's no different than wearing whatever pants you want to wear. It's just wearing a hat. I mean, obviously, no hats that are going to be disrupting the learning environment, but I mean, I don't see how a beanie could be disrupting a learning environment or how it's seen as disrespectful if that's how the kid feels that they want to, you know, represent themselves in the classroom. So just, I mean, no hoods is another thing that we decided, is you can't really tell who a person is if they have a hood on, but hats that are just like beanies and snapbacks, it's not really, they're not, kids aren't going to be wearing it to disrespect anybody, and they're just going to be trying to be as comfortable as they can in their learning environment.
Thank you, Chase. So the students did, I believe you all got a copy of the proposal that they brought forward, and I did in my social principals group, reach out just to find what other districts, you know, in, within our area are moving towards hats. Many already, no hats, sorry, policy. Many have already moved to the change. Abington, Braintree, Canton, Hull, Hingham next year is moving to the change. Middleborough, Pembroke, Rockland, Silver Lake, Weymouth, Whitman Hansen were ones that I got answers from, so I just added those here. We are, we did put it out to the staff before we brought it forward here for a vote. We are, we did put it out to the staff before we brought it forward here for a vote, and that it was voted in favor of the change, 59.6%. I think you did see that as well. And so we're just looking, what I would like to do if, if the school committee is willing is to do it as a trial basis for the remainder of this year, to see if students can be responsible with hats. We, we won't allow hoods. We just want to be able to make sure we can identify everybody for safety reasons. But if, if, you know, given the opportunity to see if they can rise to the occasion and do it respectfully, I'm all for it. I'm, I'm excited that they took it upon themselves to, to make up the proposal and bring it to their, you know, their student council, because I think that is a process of how you make change. So I applaud them for doing that, and I bring it to you for a vote, for an amendment for the year. And then if it's done, you know, respectfully, positively, then we can look to change it moving forward.
I do have, I'm, so first of all, I'm in support of it. I work in a middle school, and I know, you know, I'm not in support of hoods, but this doesn't include hoods. I know that there are a lot of kids that do feel more comfortable and more themselves. My only question would be reference that you surveyed the teachers, and 59% were in favor. Did they have any feedback? Did the other 41% have any concerns or anything brought forth?
I think a lot of it had to do with they would like a trial period, so I think that's what we're looking for. I think a few of the middle school teachers were responsibility in terms of maturity of it, and again, that's why we kind of want to do a trial.
Okay. Thank you for putting this together.
I know, and you're right, it has been around forever.
For years.
Since you both have been here.
Bring it to your student council.
And sometimes it's good just to, should look at things and to come forward and, and, you know, use your voice, so.
I was always an anti-hatter, and it was more of a respect thing, you know, but I, I believe you, it's right, times have changed.
Thank you.
Your skills to advocate for change are impressive and should serve you well in the future, and you should be proud of yourselves.
Thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to make the following two changes to the student handbook just effective for the remainder of the school year? One, change the wording on page 15 to, students may wear hats or other head coverings with exception of hoods as long as they cause no learning distractions and do not impede the administrator's ability to determine a student's identity. And two, change the wording on page 29 to, students are to remove hoods, outside coats, and jackets or warm-up jackets in the building.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next up are policies to open and review. Let's start with the second set first.
Sure.
So last month, the MASC released a bulletin stating that as part of their ongoing policy revision work, they recently reviewed policy AC, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Policies ACAB, sexual harassment, and JICK, harassment of students have been similarly revised to expand protected classes in the Just Language to be in line with current federal and state requirements and recommendations. So I'd like to make a motion to open up policies AC, AC-R, ACAB, and JICK, and have our newly-formed policy review committee to review the MASC's proposed changes and report their findings back to us in a subsequent meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. And then two other policies, IJOA field trips as well as the accompanying field trip permission form.
So we're looking at, you know, down the road, possibly as early as next spring, opening up international trips again, which do have to go to the school committee for approval. So as part of that initial process, we wanted to look back at these policies, and Mrs. Dragonetti has been involved, so I don't want to add some information.
Yeah, so we did take a look briefly at the field trips and field trip permission form, and these are the only two policies that we have that even reference international travel. So I mean, it's kind of a, it's very broad, and so we're going to just kind of take a look at it and make sure that it is up to date as we relook at international travel.
So go ahead and open those up as well.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I guess we should. Is there a motion to open up policies IJOA field trips and IGAOA Form 1 field trip permission form?
Moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, warrants. Mrs. Dragonetti?
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2022. Bill warrants, on March 3rd, 2022, a warrant in total of $49,296.44. March 10th, 2022, a warrant in total of $97,167.85. March 17th, 2022, a warrant in total of $268,488.80. On March 24th, 2022, a warrant in total of $76,998.50. And on March 31st, 2022, a warrant in total of $108,093.1. The following two payroll warrants were issued, number 31 on March 4th, 2022, for $533,385.14, and number 32 on March 18th, 2022, for $515,944.43. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the Selectmen's office for review.
Thank you. Public comment, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during public comment. None, we'll move on to the calendar of events. District-wide, we have no school this Friday, April 15th, and spring break is next week, April 18th through the 22nd. And the next half-day will be scheduled on Wednesday, May 4th. Under district meetings, we have the school council meetings. Howard's going to be held April 28th at 2:45 in the Howard Conference Room. Rose L. McDonald's will be April 26th at 3:30 in the conference room, and Spring Street is April 27th at 3:00, which will be virtual. The next PTO meeting is April 26th at 7:00 PM at Barrett's Ale House, and the next Athletic Boosters meeting is Thursday, April 14th at 7:00 here in the middle, senior high school Learning Commons. At the Rose L. McDonald's School, on April 13th, Grade 1 will have Spring According to Humphrey Pizza Party, which is sponsored by the PTO. On April 25th to the 29th, it's going to be the Grade 3 Wax Museum, and on May 2nd and 3rd is the Grade 3 Math MCAS. At Howard, we mentioned that the sixth graders are up at Nature's Classroom through Thursday. For Grade A, excuse me, Grade 5, ELA MCAS will be held on April 12th and 14th. For Grade 4, ELA MCAS will be held on April 11th and 13th, and math will be held on May 9th and 17th. And on April 27th at Howard, Life Touch Spring Pictures will be taken. At the middle, senior high school, on April 13th, at 5:00, it's the National Junior Honor Society induction in the auditorium, and then the National Honor Society induction will be in the auditorium starting at 6:30. On April 14th, from 6:00 to 8:30, there's the Try M movie night in the CAF, and on April 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30, the Try M induction in the auditorium. On April 28th, at 7:00 PM, will be the Mr. WB competition in the auditorium. April 29th, from 5:00 to 6:30, is the ELE Family Night in the cafeteria. On April 30th is the Toll Road Scholarship Drive. On May 2nd, it's going to be the AP Chemistry Exam and the Middle School Math MCAS Session 1. On May 3rd, AP Environmental Science Exam and the Middle School Math MCAS Session 2. On May 4th, AP English Literature and Composition Exam. May 5th, AP Stats Exam, and on May 6th, AP US History Exam. Everybody better get studying. Our next regularly school committee meeting will be on May 9th, and again, that will be at 5:00 PM here in the middle, senior high school Learning Commons. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.